At this point, I would like to recall the meeting of the Central School Board in order, to order, and I'd like everybody to rise for the last.
25 of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
At the record is that all board members are present, resuming after executive session. Start with the student report, and what did we do? We do?
No.
No, no student report. Minutes, items 107, now 8, and 109, minutes of both past meetings, as was 110. We're going to table those in the interest of time, but there's some edits that will take a little bit more time, so we'll table them until August 21st. So we've got Dennis Kopp.
Yes, I would like to update the board and community on the asbestos that we had at the middle school when we replaced five water fountains in the middle school with the water fountains that you can also fill up your water bottle. On one of the removals of the water fountain, a chip about the size of a dime broke off of the wrapping, the asbestos wrapping around the piping. So the school district immediately shut down the building, and we called in a company that specifically deals with asbestos, Eisenback, and Ronnie Peet. So our middle school staff, the secretaries, the administrators, they've been working out of the conference room the last two weeks, but we received a letter today from the engineering company, and I'd like to read that. "The final sets of clearance samples have been received for the cleanup resulting from the asbestos disturbance at the Southern Middle School. All samples had no asbestos detected, and the building cleanup is done. The asbestos contractors be mobilizing and will be off-site this morning. All areas in the building where disturbance has occurred or where people walk from the area is disturbed were cleaned and cleared. The entire building can be occupied by district personnel and the public. Monitoring report documenting everything will be forwarded shortly." And, yeah, I think it's important for the board and the community to understand that when this occurrence happened, the dime-sized, maybe a nickel-sized piece of the asbestos broke off of the wrapping around the pipe, it was immediately, the building was immediately evacuated, it was shut down, and we had air sampling done throughout the building on all levels and all wings, and we had particulate samples also done. And in all cases, it was negative. And then what we had to go through is we had to do the abatement on the five areas where the water fountains were, but they also had to do cleanup. They had to do pre-cleanup and then post-cleanup. And one of the beauties about our camera system was that we could monitor them from here that they were doing the appropriate cleanup. So to the extent we had the dime-sized asbestos, there were no hazards detected then, and now we have the final clearance from the engineering company that specializes in asbestos. And ironically, we're the third district within Rockland County this summer that has had to deal with an asbestos-related matter. Any questions?
Yes, question. With regard to the water... With regard to the water that will now be coming out of fountains and so forth, has there been a certificate that the water is acceptable to be used by the students?
I can check on that, Mr. Kearns. The asbestos material of the wrapping around the pipe, and I will check with the engineering company to see if we also have the clearance on that.
So in keeping with our idea of transparency, could you please publish that on the website so that people are aware exactly that, you know, the water is acceptable to have to be trucked by the students?
Sure, we'll post it on the website. And we'll post this clearance letter on the website as well.
Okay, any other questions on this matter? I have a question, so, other than, will this report be posted?
Yes.
The one that was shared, okay? And the water and air testing, so whether the water is going to be tested and the air quality testing as well?
Air testing, the particular matters tested, I know that definitively, I'll have to check before.
Okay, and so it's the same company that does the abatement?
No, they're two different companies.
Two different companies?
One company that did the abatement, and then one company that does the cleanup and monitoring. I don't recall the abatement company.
And they do the testing?
The abatement company just does the abatement part, and then this company does the cleanup and monitoring of the facility.
Eisenback is the first or the second?
Second.
The second, okay. So there was another abatement company before them, and then they come in, clean up further, and test?
The, this company, Eisenback, they had to do a, they had to monitor all the air and particulate samples, then they cleaned the building, and then the other abatement firm came in and did the abatement on the five water fountain areas, and then Eisenback returned to do a second cleanup and do the testing and monitoring for clearance.
Okay, please keep us updated, it's still an important matter. I know all these buildings that are fire to a certain age, building have this issue, anytime this construction should always have the precautions to protect, you know, staff and most of the people doing the work, you know, even though the kids are not in the building for the time being, but everybody who's in the building.
Yes.
So thanks for keeping us updated. 1.12, public participation on action items only. For details, public participation items are three minutes per speaker with a total of 30 minutes, and this is on action items only. Please address the board president and identify yourself by name.
Michael Curly, 84, New York City. I guess it's a new issue to me, but have there been people around this asbestos who came in contact with or nearby that have worked for the school district? I know the kids aren't in school?
No.
There have been, no, are you sure? Have you done a survey of that, sir?
Yes, the facilities department here did do a survey of all workers. There were none in the building at the time, and when the company that was doing the installation found the chip, they shut down immediately, and our facilities department went over there and secured the building so nobody else could come in.
Okay, could I just make one recommendation? That you do put a survey out there, ask if there's any teachers that were there, so if there is, they can get tested, just for safety for the future, and it'll save us in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Being that there are no further comments, we will close this segment. I'm sorry. So maybe you, would you like to come up?
I would.
We've closed this section, and now we're going to do our call on action items, 2.01 to 2.07. Any questions before we do a consent agenda? Okay, and I motion for a consent agenda on 2.01 to 2.07. Anybody? Motion?
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Paul Shapiro is moved, and Mr. Matt Kern, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, nay. Any abstentions? None. Items 1, 2.01 to 2.07 have been resolved. Information item 3.01 is being tabled in the interest of time to the August 21st meeting. Thank you for everyone's patience waiting for us, and we apologize for our tardiness. Second portion, public participation, 4.01, on non-agenda items, on any item the public wishes to, just to be known. Say hello, three minutes per speaker, a total of 30 minutes. Mr. Curly?
I just want to comment on, the school, the village, the school district was hit with a lawsuit, okay, a little while back there, okay? And it was the Andy Dale family lawsuit, okay? It was a notice of issue put to this administration, okay? You had a right to do what they call a 58 hearing, okay? But 58 hearing protects the people and the taxpayer, okay? That was not done. Whether advised not to do a 58 hearing is incompetent, and look into that strongly, okay? Because what a 58 hearing does, only municipalities and school districts even get 58 hearings, okay? What a 58 hearing does, it gives you a chance to figure it out, and talk to the person maybe, and come up with a settlement before it turns into a full-blown lawsuit and the taxpayer, who am I, okay? That's my first issue. My second issue is, I'm a retired firefighter for New York City. Years ago, there was a case where a woman was trying to be a firefighter, she was a firefighter, so they had a full-blown trial on this issue. And they went through the whole thing, and the captains and lieutenants, and they said, you know, this woman didn't do this, this woman didn't do that, and she didn't do this either. So at the end of the case, the judge, federal judge he was, he says to everyone, he says to the lieutenants and the captains, can I get the files on everyone else? He said, I don't have any files on everyone else. Well, that's prejudicial when it's said, okay? And this leads me back to Mr. Biddy now, okay? We're making choices on Mr. Biddy, on whether he should be this coach or not, okay? And all these innuendos are out there now about, oh, he curses, and about anonymous letters, okay? Well, then, let's make sure there's nothing on any coach or any teacher in the whole district, if that's the way we're going to do it. And if we're going to do that from now on for him, then do it for everyone. Then they should just get, everyone should be fired then, if there's anonymous letter. Everyone should stop if there's anonymous letter. I'll tell you another story. Years ago, my brother Tommy, who since passed away, okay? He was a police officer in Suffolk. He was, he got a call to go to a bar in Suffolk, okay? So he goes, he pulls this guy over, because they called someone, there was a snake ball, and they called and said the guy was drunk and driving, all right? It was a guy that Mr. Griff Powell had brought into the district, he was a wrestling coach, okay? So my brother Tommy goes, pulls him over, and he didn't think the guy was drunk, okay? So he let the guy go. Next day, my brother Tommy gets a letter, or two days later, saying, hey, why didn't you arrest that guy? You should arrest him, he was drunk, okay? Luckily, luckily, another cop my brother worked with told my brother Tommy about the story, all right? There was someone in the school district, he's still a teacher in the school district now, as a matter of fact, all right? So they went to get someone else. So it goes on in school district where people go to get other people, okay? So they just, and I know I'm going over into, but I'm going to, I thank you, you're the thing, all right? So here we have, now we have, if we look back at everything in the school district, we lost millions of dollars when people getting credits for things taken, okay? There's been many affairs, there's been many different events that got on, okay? But we're not dredging that up to every single person, but we're doing it to this man named Joe Biddy, okay? I never ran for Joe Biddy, okay? Only met him a few times, I guess he was a golf teacher when I was in high school, if you look back, so I'm not, you know, he's not my friend, but it's what's going on here that's driving me crazy now. It's how he's being treated, okay? So I guess my main point is, so we know about this anonymous letter, went to newspapers, went to district attorney's office, went to school boards, okay? But take a look at that anonymous letter, because I'm sure some of you read it, okay? One, it's anonymous, you don't, okay, anonymous, you don't know who it is, okay? All right? So Mr. Biddy did a defensive course for girls, okay, for years, that was approved by this school district and approved by this school board, okay? At some point, someone got hurt in that defensive class, girls feeling to each other. Then with this school board, not two same people, because you're too young for that, okay? This school board then decided that Mr. Biddy, Mr. Biddy could be the medicate, so they came after Mr. Biddy then, okay? So this was not done with Mr. Biddy saying that I'm going to go and do this to these girls, okay? Now I question this now, okay? If Mr. Biddy was so wrong back then, and we had all these men and women teachers, okay? Someone had to see something, and if they saw something and didn't see anything, then they're complicit. So let's say this whole district was negligent, but there was no written reports all those years. There was nothing anywhere, okay? Now we get an anonymous letter from someone back whenever, okay? We know trick and game go on, okay? I just ask you to just think if it was yourself, if it was your own child or friend. And I understand now, I sit back and I see adversity on this board, okay? But think about men and women, and you're right, you're right to a fair chance, you're right to a fair trial, and you're not doing it here, okay? And this will never end because of this, because you're not even, because your process alone isn't fair. If you lead to a fair process, you got a shot. But I'm not telling you as I look at this all, there's no investigation. Look around. Someone stand up and tell me, who's been questioned so far? Not about the fact that something happened, but who in this room has witnessed anything? We don't have any, because nothing happened but a coach doing what he was allowed to do by a school district and by the people in his community, okay? There were hundreds and thousands of girls who loved it, okay? And that brings back another point, okay? If you're doing defensive course of a woman, 95% of the women's going to be attacked by a man. You're better off in teaching the class and being the one that's attacked or not attacked. That's life, that's the reality of life. I'm going to finish you off, I appreciate that.
It's time if you could kindly write help, I would appreciate it.
I would too.
Thank you.
But, you know, if we want to go and look at everyone, then let's look at everyone then, okay? But I want to know one thing. Have you been giving reports on every teacher and every sport person that's going in front of you right now? Or was it just Mr. Biddy? Because that's, Brenda Berkman was her name in New York City, when they went against that woman that wanted to be a firefighter, okay? Well, you were doing the same thing then, you were doing the same thing now that was done then. And I say give them a chance, all right? At least give them, give everybody, do the same thing to everyone. Because if you want to talk about person, we're going to get a lot of people fired in this district, okay? All you got to do is go look at this year, what happened on the sidelines. And the AD was there and had meetings with the people. But if we want to keep this going and keep churning this, then just keep churning it, because that's what you're doing. What you're doing exactly what people did to women years ago. You're just doing it to an older man now, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Wow. Tough act to follow, sir.
Is that BA working?
Is there?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This is a count on time. Hello? It's also phys ed session, right? Technical skills. I understand that our athletic director attended a BOE executive session meeting in early spring and ran a big-time character assassination of him. I was shocked when I heard some of the comments that came out of this. I was referred to as incorrigible, old school, likes to do things his way, among other things. The last thing I heard referred to as incorrigible is the horse in the movie Steepless King. Old school, John Wooden, the great UCLA coach in the 60s and 70s, won 10 NCAA titles in 12 years. He was in his 60s, approaching 70 when that happened. He was old school. Vincent Barney was old school. Joe Torre was old school. Yes, I'm old school, and I'm proud of it. If there'd be more people around here, it should be old school. Likes to do things his way. Who doesn't like to do things his way? Now, there was a lot more said there, including what I consider a threat to the board. If you bring Joe Biddy back, I'm going to bring out more stuff, make sure I strive, pretty much what the gentleman before me was referring to. A lot of innuendo about a course that I ran for 40 years and never heard a single complaint. When I started this activity, I told the principals in the main office, you ever get a complaint, it's warranted, this activity is done, and it's over. The 40 years, I never had a complaint. Now suddenly, this stuff is coming out of the woodwork, but anonymous. It's anonymous, it doesn't exist. He made it sound, you know, like we were fighting like cat and dog every day. I could not believe the level of hostility and hatred that came out of this meeting, out of this person's mouth. I gave everything I had for five years. I ran programs that nobody else was running, the self-defense, the Superstars that I started 40 years back, and ran away up until the year I retired. In five years, we never had a meaningful disagreement, unless it was something like over professional sports, who's better, the Yankees or the Mets? Not a single meaningful disagreement. And now, he makes it sound like we were at each other's store every day. I even gave him a $1,200 generator that I purchased right before the Sandy storm, and after pouring gasoline in this thing every night when the lights went out, I got rid of it, and it was open. I asked him to use a generator? He said, sure, come and get it.
Mr. Biddy, I'm gonna...
I never had any indication...
Mr. Biddy, can I interrupt you for a second, please? I'm just going to ask that you don't mention employee by name, because we're obliged to follow that long. Students and staff.
I didn't mention names.
You can say anything you want, but just please...
Okay. I never had, never had any indication that he had an issue with me. I was totally blindsided by this whole episode. One last thing. In 2015, this administrator, is that okay? This administrator comes up to my office, he asks Bobby Walkley, Bobby Walkley's in there, he asks me to step out of the alcove. Obviously, there's something he didn't want anybody else to hear, and he says to me, for a guy your age and so tough, teaching six, six classes of phys ed a day, if you retire in June, I'll promise you two more years to coach. I take exception to that remark. First of all, it's a totally inappropriate age discriminatory remark. I spoke to a new group of HR people, and they were shocked by this. And secondly, what happened to two years of coaching? There were two coaches that have coached four and six years after they're retired, as they should be, because they're the best at what they do. Why do I get only two years? I almost feel like this whole thing was premeditated, that, okay, two years from now, I want you out. And I'm angered by this, I'm hurt by it, and I'm also hurt by this constant character assassination, and innuendo that he's been putting out there based on a class that I ran successfully for 40 years without a complaint. I'm proud of everything I did in this district, and I feel like after 50 years, I deserve a little bit better than this. This character assassination and innuendo for nine months has been going on. He threatened my wife with what he would do if, if we fought it, and he threatened me, we're going to bring out all kinds of stuff on you. What stuff? And I'm hurt, I'm disappointed, I cannot imagine the five previous athletic directors that I worked for would have done anything similar to this. They weren't, it just wasn't an empty end, eh? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biddy. Please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Tom Barry. You've been gracious enough to let me speak for my fourth time here. I'm a resident, I live across the border of New Jersey. To those that were never here, I'm a retired athletic director, cross-country coach for Royal River. If you remember the first time I came here, I came here, told you the program story, we went through this last summer. Our board was sitting right here. We got an incident between the athletic director, we say, and that was the head football and baseball coach. Clashes, we got a comedy coach, and I sat in the chair, and it got to the point that it broke Royal River in half. Should have been settled. Person in charge should have sat the athletic director, Mr. Biddy, down and said, let's work this out. You don't treat a 49-year employee like you treat a rookie. Let's work this out. When I've spoken to you in the past, I've always said three things. What has happened? Two legendary Royal River families, I can't say names, you know who I mean. One of them served this district as a teacher, coach, principal, central office, the best in the business, and Mr. Biddy. The others, the thing that's going on now, the former athlete to the coach are now at war. The person you named as director of Cross Country, they're at war. I bet you this board don't even know the last week what was going on in the community over the Cross Country camp. Shameful. Shameful. And last but not least, on this matter, these lads that have stood here six months in a row late into the night have coached, been coached by this gentleman in a form. The new director, they were coached by him in the winter and the spring. What are you doing to these kids? They're in the middle of this mess that you allowed to fess them. Now, look up the records. The other gentleman who I have utmost respect for as the girls' coach took over, and Mr. Biddy retired and went to track. 2016, '17, and 2017, '18. One coach, two programs. Check the record. One of the teams, your girls, were a national and state power. Check out how they've done the last two winters and spring. Your boys were exceptional in Rockland County powers. Check the record, how they've done the last two winters with one coach, with two teams. There was compromise all over this place because of this man's time here. Maybe it could have been that the coach was the director, and maybe Mr. Biddy was the assistant coach in the twilight of his career. Under this information, was that ever thought of? And last but not least, and I think this is an important point, I've sat here for four boards of education, not once did anybody address and say, what about the girls? I've heard boys, boys, boys. What about the girls that had a full-time coach every fall since this district started, and now they are sharing a coach? Because this leadership cannot get their act together. And this gentleman here, I talked earlier, I love your passion. Good luck. Figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biddy.
I thought it was for girls, and it was suffering. Just like to step back to these asbestos, these asbestos issues again, and maybe I can help you guys handle it here in the coming months, in the future. I remember about 35 years ago, the very first deposition I had in my life, and it's one that I'll never forget. It's the one out of a couple of thousand that I'll never forget. I remember sitting, I remember sitting in a conference room, it went like this, and there was a man, a old man, but he was probably about my age, so was I am now, and he was sitting opposite me, and he was sitting next to his wife. And I can still picture him, and he sat there, and it took a while to take his deposition. I actually didn't question him. He sat there with a neck, a mark on his forehead, and it was a burn mark. And he had that burn mark because he was dying from asphyxia, from exposure to asbestos, and that was from radiation. It was the mark that they put to him, radiation, and I can still picture that man. And he died about two days after the deposition. And to dispel some of the myths, you know, I've heard this dime-sized piece of asbestos mentioned.
And I actually sat back there with my wife and I laughed about it, not laughing because you got dads, but I remember about 10 years ago, this school, you know, Suffering Middle School was closed because of asbestos. And Dr. McNorton put out a report and told the Journal News that everything's okay and there was only a dime-sized piece of asbestos found. So that same dime exists around Suffering Middle School. But you don't have to be exposed to mass quantities of asbestos for 10, 20, or 30 years. Like remember when we were kids, they talked about diet coke, low your drink, a million cans of diet coke. Over the next 40 years, you might get cancer from it. That's not the case with asbestos. If you're exposed to mass quantities of asbestos, it increases your odds of getting sick. You'll get sick sooner. But you can be exposed to very small amounts of asbestos, Dr. I'm sure you know this, and you can get sick and you can end up like that man that I'll never forget that I sat opposite 35 years ago. Now, last thing, what I find my bother, and maybe it'll help everyone here in the future, is that we know from history that there was asbestos, there is asbestos in that building, just as there is asbestos in virtually all buildings of that age, that time period. And here you had a contract to do these water fountains, alright? Now, what's by water fountains? Pipes. You have pipes behind the water fountains. Where is asbestos primarily found? It's wrapped around pipes. Common sense dictates that it was asbestos by those water fountains. Now, I don't know what procedure was followed when they did this, but when the contract is given out and you want to start banging down walls or opening up walls, especially for water fountains, common sense would dictate that you have, that it's done the right way. Meaning, you're proactive, you seal off the area beforehand so that when you open up the wall, they can take the samples and see if there's asbestos there. Not having plumbers come in with either long-handled hammers, short-handled hammers, or jack hammers and start opening up walls and hitting areas that's going to have old asbestos, which is friable, which will get into the air. So I don't, if that's how this was done, I don't get that. I don't know how it works within the district as far as, you know, who puts bids out on contracts and then who monitors it. But you don't have to be a lawyer or a doctor or a civil engineer to know that if it was done this way, it was done as best. And the next time if somebody is going to open up walls for something, for something in the building, you got to do it right, you got to seal it off beforehand and then go through the work. Especially when you know you're going to be dealing with pipes like water fountains. And I believe the common sense should have dictated that, you know, it's nice to be able to fill up the water bottles for little kids and stuff like that, but you know what? Under these circumstances, asbestos and anyone will tell you it's best to leave it alone and not open it up. And in this case then, those water fountains should never put in. I don't care if you got grant money, if that was the case, to pay for it 100%, it just shouldn't be done. Alright, so, you know, I hope it's all cleaned up. My kids are out of the school, but I was involved in that litigation a long time ago, I did know about it. So, you know, that's always been a red flag for me. And yes, I have a wife who teaches in the building, so, you know, I'm concerned about her safety too.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty, we appreciate you.
Think about it next time.
You got any comments? Or?
Yeah, thanks for giving me the second opportunity. I left two things out. I want to compliment the new board president because when the vote last month was 4 to 1, having one coach for two teams, you voted no, and you stated eloquently why, great line. You said, "It's like a bad manager managing the Yankees." You liked what you said.
I never said that.
Oh, I thought somebody, I thought you did. Somebody asked, somebody did, and I thought it was correct. There are two elephants in the room, and you really cut to the chase. You passed the school district budget 3 to 1. You've lost your board president, lost the election. I think to four of these meetings, 99% of the public participation over the last four months in this school district has been about Mr. Beatty. 99%. Think about that number.
Thank you.
Think about that number. Tie it all together, here's the other elephant in the room. We know it's 3 and 3 here, gang. Who got on this board? We also know the president voted no. So the real, real elephant in the room is, you're the key swing here.
You know, Mr. Beatty, I'm going to break, I'm going to break the format and I'm going to divert from what I'm supposed to do. It's not as simple as it looks. It's always a difficult thing when you sit at this seat and have to vote. And I just want to leave you with that message. It has not been easy and it will continue to be difficult for every one of us. And trust that we're doing the very best we can. And our main concern is always, always, and will forever be, I know that's to be the case for me and for my colleagues, the kids, they have to follow laws and there's a lot that comes into play. It's not as simple as it looks and I will continue to do my best, that's all I can promise.
And you have done brilliantly and I feel it because I sat in the chair for 33 years, not board president or not superintendent.
Thank you.
Please, please, get this thing solved.
Thank you very much.
Linda Eisen, I'm the Vittie Airmont, I'm the character to Suffering High School graduates. I will be very quick, I really just wanted to say thank you for the increased communication about tonight's meeting, about having it on Facebook and on the district website. When there's a special meeting, it's not in the calendar. And the only way for the community to know that there is going to be a meeting is if they happen to be checking board docs and having to see there's an agenda. And so it's been something I've been asking about, is there a way to increase the communication with the community when there is an extra scheduled meeting? And that happened this time and I was very happy to see it on Facebook, thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda, for the support you've given the board and your feedback. I also want to, before we wrap this segment, thank the students who are already here with us tonight. I really thank you for being here and I want you to know that we acknowledge your presence and your advocacy for yourselves and for people you care about, so thank you. This time, I would like to invite Dr. Adams for closing comments.
I used my comments about the asbestos earlier, so I'll leave those comments at the end of the table.
This time I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting. Entertaining motion. Melissa, second.
Second.
Mr. Kern, Miss Reamer, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, nobody abstaining, snub, creating adjournments, thank you everyone.